We normally have an invocation at only the first meeting of the month, but since we have it on the agenda, if you would, I invite you to join with me in the invocation. Dear Lord, fill us with your Spirit and courage so that we might bring the gifts you have given to us to this meeting. Grant us compassion as we make decisions. Bring unity to our community and let all come together to support our schools. We ask you to be with our students, teachers, and school personnel. Lead and protect them in school, at home, and in their travels. Open our ears, our minds, and our hearts to each other and our community. We pray in your holy name, amen.
Amen.
I have no agenda adjustments, council have anything? Next item on the agenda is a Constitution Week proclamation. I'm going to ask the ladies to join me at the front. Right here. This is a proclamation recognizing Constitution Week 2025. Whereas September 17th, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and its anniversary. Whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Gerald R. Michael, by authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Albemarle, do hereby proclaim September 17th through 25th, 23rd, 2025, to be Constitution Week in Albemarle and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideas of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787. Ladies, thank you for all you do. And let's get a quick picture. I'm going to allow you, anybody who wants to speak, to go up to the microphone.
I am honored to be here this evening. I bring you greetings from Yakkin River Patriots, Daughters of the American Revolution, Albemarle Chapter. In celebration of the 250th anniversary of our great nation, we are thrilled to announce a series of activities reflecting the long-lasting values of our Constitution. A banner has been placed on the east and west sides of Main Street, proudly highlighting our commitment to the core principles of democracy and unity that have shaped our nation for 250 years. An exhibit has been on display at the Main Street Library featuring historical documents, stories, and educational resources about the Constitution. We invite everyone to come and explore this rich tapestry of our nation's history. To educate and inspire our young minds about the significance of the Constitution, we have distributed over 800 copies of this foundational document to our eighth grade students at our local schools. This initiative aims to empower the great or the next generation with the knowledge and understanding of their rights and responsibilities as Americans. Lastly, I encourage you to join us on Wednesday, September, did I have it wrong? 17th, 17th, at 4:00 PM in front of the City Hall for a special ringing of the bells. This moment will serve as a reminder of the importance of our Constitution and help us to pay tribute to the sacrifices made by our ancestors for our freedom. Together, let's celebrate the past, honor our present, and inspire our future as we mark 250 years of America's journey. God, home, and country. Thank you.
Thank you for what y'all do. It means a lot to us and the education that you are putting out there. A lot of young people don't understand and you're doing something to help us with that education. Thank you for the event you're going to do Wednesday afternoon. Unfortunately, I'm going to be out of town at a meeting, but thank you for what you do. And council, any of you that have an opportunity, I encourage you to come at Wednesday afternoon at 4:00. It'll be out front. Thank you again for everything you do. Item 4B, Beverly Pennington, Principal Albemarle High School. Ms. Pennington called a couple of weeks ago and requested time to be put on our agenda to give us some great information, so we are thrilled to have you here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, for allowing me the opportunity to return and give you some updates on Albemarle High School. You may remember I was here with all of the Albemarle Principals a couple of years ago. And I think it's a good thing for you guys to know what we're doing and especially there at Albemarle High School. I want to start with this screen here, this slide here, because everything we do is built around Bulldog Pride. If any of you attended Albemarle High School, you know that the word pride is throughout the building and has been historically and it continues to be. Couple of years ago, when I first arrived, we went through the process of defining what pride means to us. And you'll see, these are the definitions that our current staff and our students work with each and every day, wherever they are in the building, on the bus, whatever they're doing, this is what it all comes back to. And you'll see that the E is expect excellence, and that is what we have done for the last two years. I think that you will be very pleased with the results that came out by the state of North Carolina last week, week before last, recently. And this is a small screenshot of the dashboard that you can find on the DPI website. But this is the result of a lot of hard work and a lot of determination and a lot of buy-in from our students, staff, and our parents. You will see, you've got four years of the grade. The grade that the state gives to schools is based on proficiency. And our proficiency numbers, once we get our students from Albemarle Middle, we do lose some students to charter options. We also lose students to our own early college options. And it's a good thing that parents have options, but I want parents to know about what we're doing at Albemarle High School because it needs to be considered as a strong option as well. But proficiency is the indicator of the grade. And for us to move up in the grade, we had to impact our proficiency. And you'll see that we have now moved from a D previously to we are a C school now. Very proud of that fact, more proud of the growth that we've had. And the growth is determined by the state of North Carolina is what they are predicted to know from the beginning of a course to the end of the course. And those are in the state-tested courses such as Math 1, Math 3, English 2, things like that. If we can grow kids, then we're doing what needs to be done to impact the overall grade eventually. We had worked hard, we knew we were growing, but we were so very pleased with us moving to a C grade. And you can see in the middle section there that the last couple of years that I've been with this team working on this, that we have consistently made growth. We have been concentrating on that, and you can see our efforts there in the results. There's another very positive thing here that I want to point out to you. To have a 233% increase in the ACT work keys is phenomenal. And this is the result of seniors who took a test last year. They were identified because they were considered concentrators in CTE courses. That means they had taken a second level of a CTE such as Health Science 2 or woodworking 2, things like that. And they take a test that is a real-world type test. It tests applied math skills, reading skills. And for us to have a 233% increase, that contributed to our grade as well. Our four-year cohort graduation rate continues to rise. There's work to do. We're looking at our biology and we know that there's opportunities there that we've got to take advantage of. And I have taken some measures to put some very dynamic folks in those positions teaching biology. And my Dean of Students was one of the best biology teachers in the district, and she's now working with us. Came down from STEM Early College to work with us, and they are getting some great coaching and mentoring. We're going to do what needs to happen to raise that biology score. There's a couple of things that I want to point out, and that is that what we did last year with a C and met growth has never been done since this accountability measure has been in place. And that was put into place the 2012-13 school year. And you can see from this slide, the years of not met, not met. So last year was our first year of meeting growth. We remained a D, but then, I'm sorry, two years ago, my first year there, we met growth. We remained a D, but last year we raised it to a C and met growth. We are on fire right now. What we can do this year is just exceed excellence, expect excellence, and we're going to continue to try to strive to bring the grade up. And we want to get to met growth, we want to get to exceeded growth. And the other diagram here just shows the consistent increase that we've had. And I think everybody in the room knows that when you make these just baby steps of increasing, they're going to take hold, and this is the direction that we want to go. Let me tell you some particular things that we have going on. We were above the state average in our growth last year. Anytime you can be above the state average, that's a good thing. I had all positions filled this year. You may remember when I was here two years ago, I had a 33% vacancy rate in core subjects, math, science, English, social studies. I have all positions filled, and some of those are with the wonderful retirees who decided to come out of retirement and work with us. They are enjoying it. I do have one part-time math position that is unfilled, but I have the best long-term sub that anyone could ask for in that position. And she is doing a phenomenal job, wants to be there with us teaching. There are people that are choosing us over other options. This summer, you know, that's the time when you're hiring folks. They are turning down jobs at other county schools and taking jobs with us because they want to be a part of what we've got going on. This year, we have the most AP courses offered of any traditional high school in the county. We will be offering AP Language, AP Pre-Calculus, and AP US History. We started an AVID cohort two years ago, we're now on our second one. And this is a tremendous part of our success. AVID stands for Advancement via Individual Determination. It's not some new fad, it's been around for 45 years. And schools that institute AVID strategies have great success. We're seeing that ourselves. If you've been to a ballgame this year, you've heard our pep band. We are thrilled to have a band. When I was here two years ago, I had to tell you that we didn't have a band teacher. I had kids wanting to take band. And so that first year, we went from no band in the fall to contracted with a retired band teacher who came in and taught maybe eight students. Well, we have grown. We now have the second-largest band in the district. And the reason we're not one is because we don't have 800 students like West Stanley has. They have 31 band members, we have 26, and they have twice the number of students. We are right at 400 students. We haven't offered SAT at Albemarle High in years, and we are doing that this year. One thing that I didn't put on here is that we were one of the recipients of the Golden Leaf Grant that the Community College received last spring. And we have now started a college-level course that's offered in our building. Our kids don't have to leave the building, drive over to the Community College. They can walk down the hall and take electronics, and it is phenomenal. We were able to fill all the seats with our students. We knew that we could bring other students in from other schools if they had their own transportation, but we didn't have to do that. Our kids are benefiting from this electronics college-level course in our building. These are some of the great things that are happening at Albemarle High School. And I want to personally thank you for your support. I know when I reached out to Mayor Michael in May of last year and said, "Hey, would y'all like to come over and just take part in Teacher Appreciation Week?" Every one of you showed up, and that meant a lot to us, just to be there and say, "Thank you for the work that you're doing." Because it's not easy work, it's hard work every day, but it's fun, it's rewarding, and we're doing great things. So thank you.
Thank you. Your vision has changed Albemarle significantly, and we appreciate what you're doing for our students. It's great.
Thank you so much. It's not one person, it's everybody in the building. And I've got a couple of staff members over here with us, my Assistant Principal and a new curriculum coach who has joined us from California, and she's loving it at Albemarle High.
Come on, stand up and come up front.
They're just two of the great people that are in the building that are giving it all they have every day. But we enjoy the work and enjoy the challenge and going to continue to do our very best for you.
Welcome to Albemarle, we're glad to have you. Council, have any questions?
Go Bulldogs!
Exactly.
Your Honor, and the band sounded good last week at the game.
Thank you, thank you so much. We're going to have a, they did a phenomenal job on 9/11. I don't know if any of you saw our Facebook post, but we did a tribute at 8:46 last week on 9/11. But we're doing a Veterans Day concert, and I'll be sure to get an invitation to you guys to come out and enjoy us about an hour or so of patriotic music and us honoring our veterans in November.
Mr. Aldrich? You know, information, Ms. Pennington, thank you to you and your entire staff. I know you've only got two of your teammates here with you tonight, but this is the type of information we need in the community. You know, this is, our schools are really the lifeblood of the community. And when we as council and we as a city look at recruiting business and industry, I think personally, I think that's one of the things that folks look at before they will move their businesses, their families to a community is they look at the level of education and what's offered.
Right.
And you know, just to hear the good things that are coming, I mean, it's, you and your entire team are to be commended for that. Thank you so much. And I, for one, am pumped about this band deal. I, for many years, the Albemarle Christmas Parade, I can remember back as a small child going to the parade and hearing all the representation from all the different high schools. So I want to, hopefully, we can see the Albemarle High School band marching in our Christmas Parade this year. I don't know if that's a feasible thing or not, but I think that would be a welcome sight as far as I know myself, and I hope I can speak for everybody else on the council. But again, thank you so much for your hard work, your commitment, and you can tell just by listening to you talk that you have a love for your job and you're passionate about it. And you know, somebody once said, "The speed of the leader determines the rate of the pack." So you've got to keep leading the charge, and I look forward to seeing the positive momentum continue and the increased results that you're going to help produce.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, Beverly, it just doesn't happen. You can't snap your finger, and what you've been able to achieve with your team is phenomenal. As a graduate of Albemarle High School in the year of our Lord, 1967, which most of you were not around, it's, it means a lot to us to see our alma mater with folks that are determined and wanting to give the best of your ability to our students. That's how they grow. And without you folks and without the dedication and the resolve, you wouldn't be here tonight. And thank you so much, and God bless, keep up the good work.
Thank you, we will.
Go Dogs!
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is approval of minutes, I have a approval of minutes for September 2nd regular session and a September 2nd closed session for personnel.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Counsel, I'm going to talk about the vacancy in our District 4 seat for a moment. Counsel received letters last week, and they have been given copies of those letters tonight for the individuals that have indicated an interest in being filling the vacancy position. Those were eight people, James T. Fleming Jr., Robert Gruber, Martha Hughes, David Morgan, Victoria Ramos, Michael Snyder, Evan Scott, St. John, and we had one more, but that person does not live in District 4 and is therefore not eligible. Counsel, as I said, receive those letters tonight. Tomorrow morning, I will mail a questionnaire to each of these individuals and ask them to complete that questionnaire. That questionnaire is due back by September the 30th. Let me say that again, September the 30th at 5:00 PM to my office or mailed to me at the P.O. Box 190, and that will be in their letter telling them where to do it. The questions were compiled by this council, and they will have the opportunity to answer those and fill out what they would like for us to be known. Also, on October the 6th, council will have these and review those presentations and have any questions if they so desire. But on October the 20th, we will allow each applicant that turns in their questionnaire to come before council and make a three-minute presentation. That three minutes will be anything they would like for us to know, but we will be strict and hold them to the three minutes because that is our policy. After that, council can decide at that point when they want to make a decision. They may need time to do some more interviews. It'll be totally up to council after the October 20th presentation when they would like to move forward. Any questions, council? Thank you. Moving on to the minister, I have one speaker. Rebecca, I believe it's Tucker, 1010 McLaughlin Street.
Good evening.
You have three minutes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm a concerned citizen because of gun violence. My house was shot through in '23 and also about two weeks ago. And I live right beside the E.E. Waddell Center. So when they're having parties there, the other weekend, they had two parties. People got out of control and started shooting. Went through the side of my house out the window, which is my daughter's bedroom. I would like to see the City of Albemarle maybe put people in place, officers in place when there's parties, more patrolling in that area because my numbers stay on speed dial. And it's not fair to me, I built my house myself to just enjoy life, but now I can't. It has really gotten on my nerves really bad. The people in that particular area, we have to listen to guns all the time, loud music. That's not fair to us. We work hard and want to come home and relax, and you can't. Every weekend, I hear people running through my yard from the Waddell Center screaming and holling. I don't know what's going on. The police come, they find bullets in front of my house. They was there two weeks ago and found the bullet, I believe, that went through my home. And I would like to see the City of Albemarle do more because we're getting this hotel now, and I see that as more problems coming in my back door. And whatever I need to do to work with the police, I will do it. Because of the fact I live alone, I'm a widow, and I can't seem to take this. So every week, if you check with the City of Albemarle, my phone number is there, and I need some help. If the police would come and patrol more often or sit at the Waddell Center when there is things going on, I would appreciate it. I don't care if they park in my yard. Most of the police here in town, they know who I am because when I made deposits at night, they meet me at the bank. So I'm asking the City of Albemarle to please help. I need some help in that particular area, and I know some of the other neighbors as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and we appreciate your comments. Chief, would you follow up on that? And council will also have the discussion about security also. We can have that privately. Thank you. Council administrative reports are in your agenda, questions or comments? I'm going to move to the City Manager's report, and Mr. Rhodes, I believe you had an introduction to start with.
Yes, let me do that. Mayor, council? It's my distinct honor to introduce the Assistant City Manager, Mr. Zach Alis, and he's going to say a few words to you in a moment. But first, as part of the introduction, would like to tell you about the fact that it's a competitive process recruiting Zach. We had over 100 applicants. Zach has been a town manager in three separate municipalities. He's been successful at every point in his career. He's a proven leader, and he's really the perfect fit here for the City of Albemarle to work with me, to work with our fantastic team, to move this forward, to take your direction, and to guide us. And we're really looking forward to working with Zach. He's a servant leader, he's a perfect member of the team. He's really the most qualified individual that we've ever hired for the Assistant City Manager position that I can tell. And that speaks not only to Zach's ability and talent, but it also speaks to the city, speaks to your leadership, it speaks to the fact that we're an attractive community for someone of his caliber, and just looking forward to working with him. With that, I will turn it over to you, Zach, to say a few words.
So first off, thank you, Manager Rhodes, for the con words. My name's Zach Alis. I come with over a decade of experience in cities across the state. I'm a credentialed manager through the International City Manager Association, past president for the Appalachian State University Local Government Alumni Association. I'm on multiple boards with the North Carolina City County Management Association's Leadership Boards, and also currently the Vice President for the Gaston Chapter of the Alumni Association, but that will be changing because I'm moving to Stanley County. I'm extremely excited to be here. Darren has been great to meet and learn from, and this leadership team is really something special, I think. So I'm very excited. I ended up, my first job out of college was the intern in Troy, North Carolina. And so I fell in love with this area probably 11 years ago, and I paid attention to it ever since. I'm excited. I think this is a place that not only I can bring my skill set, but I think I can learn. I think I can be here for a very long time. So I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for your time tonight. I'd like to thank Darren and his leadership team for the opportunity. So I'll be in the back if you have questions after this. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
I have a few other items for the Manager's report. The fire station location study will be available in October for the council meeting. The Doppler update, the Doppler system, which as you know is our after-hour system for reporting power outages. We have made some changes, and we've had one high-volume incident since those changes have been made, and there seems to be working, so it seems that we have improved upon that system. As you remember, the Grand View... As you remember, the Grand View Homeowners Association was here last meeting. Our police department has been working on that issue with the large vehicle ordinance, and we haven't received any calls for service yet, but we are prepared when we do. Want to make council aware that the Christmas luncheon for the city is scheduled for December 10th from 11:30 to 1:30. So, December 10th from 11:30 to 1:30 at E.E. Waddell. Also, the clerk sent out an email, but I wanted to remind council that the Emergency Training Center ribbon cutting will be held Tuesday, October 14th from 12:00 noon to 4:00 PM. Lunch is at noon, the ceremony is at 1:00 PM, and we need the RSVP by October 6th. Let Christina know by October 6th whether or not you'll be able to attend or not. That's all I have.
Mr. Aldridge, I believe you have some comment.
Yep, just, just one quick, Your Honor. I just wanted to wish a happy birthday. We had an Alma High resident, Mr. Jim Nance, was born on September the 14th of 1925, so he celebrated his 100th birthday yesterday after church. He has four children, and he moved to Albemarle in 1953, and from 1953 till 2007, he was the owner and operator of the Chevrolet dealership here, and he's been married to his wife Helen for 75 years. He's one of the nicest human beings anyone could ever meet. He's very humble, very kind, very gentle man, and I'm very blessed, and anybody up here that knows Mr. Nance knows that he is a true gentleman. He's a very, very nice man. I just wanted to take a minute to wish him well. He also served in World War II from 1943 to 1945, so I just wanted to make a special recognition for him tonight. I don't know too many 100-year-olds walking around, but Mr. Nance is in good health. He's still able to get around and walk, and just wanted to take a few minutes, and if you see Mr. Nance out, please wish him a happy belated birthday. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else have anything to come before council? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that would go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, A3, 5, and 6 for consult with attorney, real estate, personnel, and I'm going to add economic development.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hunt. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.